Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the August 22 meeting of the Board of Selectmen. We'll open tonight's meeting coming out of executive session that we were just in returning to open session. So I'll need a roll call vote to do that. So all those in favor of returning to open session?
Aye.
Aye, and I, Ed, I, and Brian, aye. So, just to make it official. So, thank you very much. We've got some folks in the audience that we'll be hearing from. Under announcements, which is the first item on our agenda, does, Ed, do you have anything under announcements?
I just want to remind people, school starts next week. Watch out for school buses, watch out for the kids.
No.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's a great, I, great, great.
Yeah, I wasn't sure.
Yeah.
Did you, did you have anything on topics, announcement wise?
Just a reminder that gala tickets remain on sale for the 350th. They are selling fast. So if you want to go, make sure you buy them online, or you can contact myself, Bobby Vetzold, or Anna Wholehut to get tickets.
And that event is on New Year's Eve at the Log Cabin. And also, along those lines, I just wanted to remind everybody, we haven't said it out loud in a while, that Luminarium this year is going to be on Saturday, December 21st. Traditionally, it's on a Sunday. So, just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of that. We'll keep reiterating that as time goes on. But I just wanted to make sure people can, as fall is approaching, winter will be right behind it, as we gear up for it, just to make sure everybody's on board.
It's going to stay on Saturday going forward, too. It's not just this year.
Okay. Well, there you go.
You know.
Saturday's now. Great. Thank you. Marlene, did you have any?
I don't have any.
Announcements that needed to come? Okay. Next on the agenda would be, is there anybody in the audience, public forum, that wanted, had something to state, or say? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on. We've got some minutes to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve minutes from 4/23/2019, 5/6/2019, May 9, 2019, and May 22, 2019.
Okay, the motions have been made. I'll second that motion.
I was just wondering, could we hold on the May 22 ones? I just, there were some, I just want to, I just got my packet just before the meeting, and I, there were some, I just want to, and I don't, the other ones are fine, but those I want to just hold on.
Then I'll revise my motion for 4/23, 5/6, and May 9, 2019.
All right, thank you, Ed. I will, Diana, seconded that motion. So the motion's been made, it's been seconded. Is there any discussion on any of those minutes? All right. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you. Okay. Posted business now, as far as the agenda. We have in front of us a host community agreement for Urban Grow.
You know, I had told them about 6:30.
Okay, so why don't, so why don't we hold off on that, just so we can hear from them? This will be a conversation simply about the agreement. The project itself has not yet been approved, but this is part of the process that businesses need to go through with getting their licenses for cannabis.
Do you actually have them to meet up?
I'm sorry?
Is there actually a written agreement?
No.
Not yet, not approved. It's in draft form.
That you have?
It's in draft form for the Board of Selectmen and Urban Grow to negotiate.
Right, it's a negotiation agreement. But nothing official yet. That's what we're going to be talking when they come in later.
No, I know, but I'm just wondering what's in it, so.
Basically, well, we'll talk about it more, but it's about the laws and the town bylaws, the state laws, and then it talks about the financial impact to the town.
People applause, that indicates that it's non-binding on the town pending?
I don't know.
Number three, at the bottom of page one, number three.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. Topic number two, we just had some salary changes to take place in the police department. Changes that are made to particular positions.
Positions.
Positions within the department. No additional funding from, that wasn't already within the department's budget.
Right, it's within its budget.
The budget, so. I'll entertain a motion to approve those.
I'll make a motion to approve those.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made, seconded. Is there any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. All right. We have an application for an auctioneer permit in our packets. Is this, is this just a one-day?
Right, this is for September 21st.
Right.
At 164 Depot Road.
Okay.
The only thing I don't understand on this is all the attachments that are on this. What is, why do we attach all?
Oh, the attachments from the bylaws?
Yeah.
Those are the town bylaws, correct me?
Yeah, it looks like, to Ed's point, it looks like it talks about driving over the property and things like that, so maybe, maybe it's.
Auctioneers related to that.
Maybe it's because if people are going to be there, they've got to follow certain guidelines or rules. I mean, I kind of thought the same thing, unless it was just.
They have all.
More information than necessary is attached here.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not seeing anything specific to.
Right.
Yeah, I don't see anything specific to the auctioning, but.
All right, are there any questions regarding?
Yeah, I'm just surprised, the actual license, oh, that's his auctioneer license.
Right.
Right, right, the license will be in.
Never mind, never mind, never mind. I will make a motion to approve the auctioneer's license of, is it Donald Rousher?
It's hard to read.
Yeah, it is, I'm going to look at the license here. Yes.
Rousher, R-A-U-C-E, yep.
For September 21st, 2019, at 164 Depot Road.
Great, motion's been made, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you. Okay, guys, next up, just an informational update regarding Treeworks.
Sure.
If you would.
You want to turn it on?
Yeah, if you could come forward.
Please, thank you. Just so it gets picked up by the camera better. Yeah, thank you.
So, thanks for having us. It's been since December, since we met to approve the community host agreement together, and we just figured it would be a good idea to come and give you an update where we're at, and spend some time now. We, after submitting the host agreement, or completing the host agreement, we submitted our full application to the state, and very slow process with the application. It's about 240 days until we heard anything, and that just came last week. So, the state has reviewed our application, and they've sent back some edits that we need to kind of clarify a few things within the application. After that, we'll send back a revised copy, in which case, they will look over the application again, and at that point, kind of vote on a provisional license. Once we have a provisional license, we can start kind of submitting architectural plans and building out the facility. So, it's a really slow process, if anyone's been following the, kind of the news and how the rest of the industry's moving, it's a slow, very, very slow process, so. But we're excited to get going, and the plan still hasn't changed at all. Everything's going well besides that. Anything else you two gentlemen want to add?
Just a note on the, regarding the CCC reaching out to the town about.
Sure. So, at some point, the CCC, they've told us they're going to reach out just to make sure what we've stated on our application regarding the host community agreement is true. So, I'm just curious if that's happened yet? Does anyone reset to that?
I have not received any communication.
We have not.
Sure. I'm sure that will probably come after our application is deemed complete. So, right now, it's not deemed complete, because there's a few kind of questions they're asking us, making sure we're tying up the loose ends, so you should hear fairly soon. Go ahead.
Could I just ask about the edits?
Sure.
Like the nature of the edits?
Yeah, so, there's a couple, each one of us has a background check, so we have to kind of go through anything that's ever happened with us, and so there's a couple small edits we need to clarify about our personal history, each owner, nothing major, significant, just making sure that they understand our history. They are, we kind of, we knew this would happen, they asked a bunch of edits about our plan to positively impact areas of disproportionate impact. So, we need to elaborate on how we're going to contribute to those areas. So, for instance, Greenfield, Amherst, Holyoke, these are areas that are, have been impacted, as they say, on the war of drugs. So, we need to kind of elaborate on how we're going to help those areas. And then our diversity plan, which, an example they've given us is, you know, how are we going to hire X amount of our staff from a diverse population, and so forth. So, we submitted our ideas originally, that seemed to be pretty good, and they, most of the edits, they just want to, they want metrics, so they want us to state a goal, and then to provide a metric. For instance, we will hire, 50% of our staff will be of a minority group, or of a veteran group, or whatever it might be. So, it's mostly just clarifying the metrics regarding the goals, so.
Kind of clarifying information that you've already provided, they just digging down a little deeper on it?
Yeah, so, we made statements that we're going to work with. You know, one of the statements, we talked about working with Greenfield and Holyoke Community College, both are in towns that have, had been affected by just cannabis for years, and so they wanted us to clarify, you know, how many interns, or how exactly we're going to work with the state, not just, we're working with Greenfield Community College, it's a pretty broad statement, they want to know exactly how, and we've mentioned we're going to work with other organizations, and they just want the specifics, so. They don't seem to have any issue with our plan, they just want to make sure that we're, that we're following through with what we're stating, so. And then, any other, anything else about that? I think that was just the only edits they requested.
Yeah, those are the main things, just kind of elaborating more on some of the details, yeah.
Okay. So, do you happen to know that when they, when the Cannabis Control Board reaches out to us, at that point, we'll respond with whatever questions they're asking us? But are they going to notify you, or is it just, you're not even part of that loop? You know what I mean? Or do we need to notify you that they reached us?
That's a nice question. I can reach out to the commission to just clarify that. My understanding is that they're reaching out just to make sure that everything that we're stating about being in compliance with the zoning bylaws for the town are indeed correct, and it's up to the host community to just verify that to the commission.
All right. I just didn't want to hold it up, you know, that everybody assumed somebody else was getting the information.
Yeah.
Since it's already been 240 days.
240 days.
We don't want to hold it up anymore.
Yeah, we're excited to fulfill what we, what we signed, and came to agreement on the host community agreement, and we can't do any of that until we get into business and get a final license, but it's moving in the right direction. There was a while where we were wondering what's going on, we haven't heard for a while back from the state, but we have good news, we're moving forward, and we don't have a timeline on when the final license will come, but we're moving in the right direction and making progress, so.
Great, good.
I appreciate you giving us an update, because people said, "Those guys still around?" I mean, it's been a long time, you know?
Yeah, weeds growing in the parking lot at Three West Street, and so I wanted to drive by, just want to give you an update, so everything's going great, and we're just patiently waiting our turn, and it's coming soon, so.
Well, I'm sure they're pretty busy.
They are pretty busy, yeah. We've offered to help them, staff, they can't. We told them we have plenty of employees, we can help staff if you need help, but no, they're, they're going, moving right along, so, anyway.
Very good, thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, thank you for the update, guy. Good luck.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, we can go back and take up the host community agreement with Urban Grow, if you guys wouldn't mind, maybe coming forward and just stuffs, just so your voices are picked up on the microphones.
This is Mike Herbert.
Yes, yeah, nice to see you guys again. Yeah, yeah, we've seen you.
I'm sorry, Mike and Steven.
Mike and Steven. Herbert, Herbert.
Okay, nice to meet you.
Okay.
So, Town Council has reviewed the host community agreement, and I have reviewed it with him, and between myself and Attorney Mullin, we have communicated with Steven and Mike, and there were some proposed, you know, edits, everybody seemed to agree with them. So I don't know if the board has any, any questions or notes to come.
I just have one question, the planning board hasn't approved your stuff yet, right?
We have a meeting September 4th.
Okay, so, it's, this is, this would be contingent only if.
It is, it is, and there are a number of steps, it all can occur simultaneously, but it is subject to, to them being granted.
Right, and I think that, actually, you know, the folks that were just here in front of you, so this is just one of the pieces, right? The community host agreement is one of the pieces, of the many pieces, that you folks need to, including planning board approval, to then bring to the state to ultimately, if this is the way it works out for you, to hopefully get the license, right?
Mr. Chairman, if I may just give you kind of background.
Yeah.
So, we were going to have a site in Wateley that fell through due to the farm having some issues, that I won't disclose, but the planning board was aware of that, they confirmed with the Wateley Planning Board on that. We had already been granted a provisional license from the CCC on that, and we've gotten clearance that we're able to transfer that to the town of Hatfield with a host community agreement, and they've been very, kind of pushing for us to expedite that as quick as we can in order to transfer it, so it's not just kind of out in a holding pattern, if you will. So, that provisional license would still be subject, before it goes to a final license, to get the planning board's site plan approval and the special permits. However, we can still have the provisional active here while we're doing that, so, contingent on the host community agreement.
And by active, you're, you mean that it just wouldn't lapse?
Correct.
Of what you already have, but it doesn't mean if you permissioned actually, right?
No, no.
I just wanted to spell that out.
So, if you don't get the planning board approval, all of it's off?
Correct, it would, yeah, we, obviously, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It's called a provisional, and you can't act until it's finalized.
Right.
Yeah.
I got you. I just wanted to talk about the, the sales, the revenues back to the town. So you, this says one and a half percent for the first year, and then 3% for subsequent years?
That's correct.
I guess I'm just curious why it's not 3% in the beginning. I mean, I know you're just getting started, but.
Yep.
The evidence is pretty clear that these are, you know, money-making operations, and, you know, I personally would like to see it 3% from the beginning.
Certainly, and I had a conversation today with Ms. Machansky, and, you know, that is not a deal breaker for us. We were kind of, kind of asked for that for a little bit of breathing room, but if the board would like to see 3% for fiscal year one through five, we certainly are agreeable to that, so.
Reasoning for doing this, we are trying to self-fund this ourselves, rather than bringing in big, heavy hitters from out of state, and that's why we were trying to do that, so we didn't have, so we could recover some of what we've already spent.
Right, understood, but, I mean, these businesses in all other locations have been quite lucrative.
Yeah, so we would be, we would be agreeable to 3%.
That's actually, that's actually a note I had on here, on mine as well. Ed, did you have any particular questions, or?
No, I, as far as this, we've, since we've gone through one host agreement, I don't have any further questions except that one and a half to three.
Sure.
I just, I just want to make clear to the people at home that just because we're reviewing the host agreement, doesn't mean the project goes through. It still requires planning board approval.
Correct.
Before anything happens, that's all. I just want to make that point.
Right, and I would also reiterate that this agreement, like most agreements we enter into with all different businesses, has already been reviewed by Town Council, so, you know, we're doing our due diligence and making sure that that's okay. And I've gone back and forth, you know, with the potential, with the business folks to get back and forth. So this is the final draft, right?
That's correct.
After everyone's had a chance, and their attorneys have looked at it and brought it back. Okay.
And, there was a question from the floor about, just, just to, there is language in here that says that the agreement shall be considered null and void if you don't obtain a final license, and that final license is contingent on the zoning. So just, just so that it's clear to people, particularly with you mentioning the provisional license, I don't want people to get.
Right.
Think we're skipping, skipping parts of the process, so.
It does get a little confusing with the language, and so along those lines, though, in order for them to get the license, they've got to have the host community agreement.
That's right.
You know what I mean?
That is right.
So, but, but the terminology that's used can sometimes, to what you just said, Diana, can make it assume that, well, if they're signing the host community agreement, it means it's a done deal.
Right.
To Ed's point, to Diana's point, to Brian's point, it's not yet. But by the same token, to be good business partners, we need to do our piece, so that you can move forward and see what happens.
And it's really, for townspeople watching at home, some of whom may have concerns, because there is a part of the process that still has to happen. I mean, we know from the folks who were just here, this is a slow and methodical process, So I will make a motion to accept this host agreement with the change of beginning the 3% for sales right in the first year.
Okay, so the motion's been made.
May I, may I just, are you going to ask?
Oh.
Any input from the community?
I was going to.
Sure.
But I was going to wait till.
You usually track a motion.
I was going to wait till we made a motion.
Okay.
So, so a motion was made under paragraph six to increase to 3%, so the motion's been made, is there a second?
I'll, I'll second on the 3%, to increase to 3%.
And, yeah, and the motion was to actually accept the agreement as a whole.
With that change?
With that change. I'll second it.
Okay.
Okay, so, so the motion's been made, the motion's been seconded. Do you guys have any further discussion at this point?
No, I don't have any further discussion.
Okay. Ma'am?
So, my name's Elizabeth Behringer, I live in 17 Cronin Hill Road.
Hi, Elizabeth.
And I would argue that the board should not act on this at this point, it's premature. The appeal process, should the Herbert's not be successful at the planning board, is to the zoning board of appeals, which, as I understand, this, this, the select board chooses those people, so I think it's a conflict of interest. So I would ask that you not act on it until there's been a decision from the planning board.
Lydia?
I believe the appeal process goes to court, it goes not to the zoning board of appeals.
Well, not according to the bylaws, I don't think.
It's if there's a decision of the building inspector, that someone disagrees with what the building inspector is saying, that goes to the zoning board of appeal. But the planning board, if you're appealing a planning board decision, it goes to court.
Well, it talks about special site permits, and then it talks about the appeal process.
I don't have to explain it any other way.
Well, it does say to secure from, from the building inspector, but, but the building inspector can issue a permit until land board approves the site permit.
Right, so, if, but, you're talking about two different things. You're talking about a building permit from the, from the building inspector? Okay?
I'm just concerned.
Yeah.
I, I would also suggest that by the board, if the board approves this community host agreement, it does not commit, as we've all just said numerous times, it doesn't mean the project, no offense to you, necessarily is moving forward, that, that's out of our hands.
That I understand, but I just think it's premature, so I would say that.
But it is part of the, but it's part of the application process.
I understand that it's part of the application process, but the Cannabis Control Commission is very nonspecific about the order in which things need to happen, so I would suggest that it's premature.
But all things need to happen.
Right.
I understand that.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, the CCC does not specify an order, but they do, there is an indication that a provisional license, in order to obtain a provisional license, you have to have a host community agreement, and then, in order for that provisional license to be converted to a final license, you must get local permits, and so on and so forth, that may exist pertaining to the bylaws.
Right. Thank you. Did anybody else have anything to say on this topic? Okay, the motion's been made, the motion's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'm not opposing, I'm not voting, I'm going to stay neutral.
Objection?
I'm going to do an abstention, yes.
Okay, so, the vote was two in favor and one abstention. All right, thank you. All right. Man, we cannot get rid of this thing. So, we now have MO, an MOU, memorandum of understand between the town and the Team Service Local Union. So what I meant by that was, we've been going back and forth with language issues and concerns for the last few months. So the contract itself was voted on months ago, and agreed to months ago, but we just need to wrap this up and make it official. So, we met last week or two weeks ago with the, with our DPW union and the Team Service Union, their representative, and clarified what, we were basically all saying the same thing, we just needed to clarify it and get it in writing, so that our other departments within town, you know, had a way forward, so. So I'm guessing you actually need us to vote on this officially?
And sign.
Yes, and sign it, that's in here.
I will make a motion that we accept the, is it the changes to the contract, or the changes to the MOA as presented?
Okay, so there's been a motion made, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Revised, as revised.
So the motion made and seconded to the revised memorandum of agreement, is there any further discussion?
No.
Diana?
No.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you. Excuse me. Conservation restriction baseline documentation, is there?
These four bound copies here, the department, right, Department of Conservation, Recreation, completed a baseline report for conservation restriction in conservation areas up off of Rocks Road, the Terry Blunt watershed area is one of them, and it just requires the Board of Selectmen's approval of those baseline reports and a signature of the chair.
So we're accepting the report?
The report, the baseline report.
Okay, so, I'll entertain a motion to accept the baseline report?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so I'll sign that.
You do it, Hapton.
Yep, and then we have the contract with Conservation about White Rock Trail.
Correct. If you recall, last year, last summer, there was some work up on the trail, a different organization this year, Conservation Works LLC.
Excuse me.
Is, is the organization to, to continue to do work on the trail.
All right, so we actually have to sign a contract with them to do so?
Yes, sign that contract as well.
All right.
And Lydia, the town clerk, is here, she's requesting a letter of support from the board regarding a project she's going to submit to, oh, she's not here.
She's in the car.
Okay.
But do we have to vote to approve this, or is, Lydia's something different, right?
Lydia's something different, separate from that.
Okay, so shouldn't we do a vote on this?
As far as the contract?
Yes, you should, I thought you were just going through the list.
Oh, no.
I thought you were going through the list, yes.
I will make a motion to approve this agreement with Conservation Works LLC as presented.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
I will second it, but I'd like to, I think we should tell the people what this sort of is.
So the motion's been made and seconded under discussion?
Yeah. Okay, the, the work on this is the White Rock Trail. It's supervision of volunteers, the timetable was November 15, 2019, it was not to exceed $4,000, and all the permitting, so, just letting people know, it's not a, a major contract, it's only a $4,000 contract, that's.
I'd just like to mention that this is covered, the expenses covered out of a grant that the town had received. that the town had received.
Right.
Right. Okay, thank you.
That's good information.
Yep. So the motion's been made and seconded, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Aye, thank you. Excuse me. So we'll wait till Lydia comes back, Marlene?
Sure.
Oh, no, we won't. Lydia's now back. So we were just talking about a letter of support for the CPA project. Lydia?
I, excuse me. Six years ago, when I got here, we found, in the vault downstairs, three cardboard boxes full of marriage licenses, death certificates, and birth certificates from approximately 1898 to 1923. This is the condition they're in.
Wow.
Yeah, they're wrapped and a little bit fragile. So when we had an inventory done of my vault, it was suggested that we find someone to preserve these. I do reference them from time to time because the records are in journals, so you have all the information written out in the journal, but sometimes you can't read the handwriting, and I'm actually very good at reading handwriting. But sometimes it can be a little difficult, and I'll actually reference these older documents. Now, somebody says, oh, well, you can just put them into those sleeves, but the experts I've talked to said, no, because of the condition of this old paper, you can't just put them into sleeves, they have to be treated first. So I contacted CO File, who is one of the conservation people that we have at our conferences, and I just made a copy of everything, but the estimate to have this done was $6,725 to do the conservation work for these documents. In addition, if we wanted to, we could get 35-millimeter security microfilm and a PDF for another $1,321, but none of our other documents have that. So I'm thinking, well, I think I'd think of that as a different project, another project down the road, to do all of them at the same time if we wanted to do something like that. So I'm going to the CPC to get some CPC money and asking them for $6,725, and part of the application process is getting letters of support from other committees in town. I've already secured a letter from the historical commission. They think it's a great idea.
You mean CPA?
Yeah, CPA, sorry.
So why aren't you going for the full amount?
Funds from the CPC committee.
So why aren't you going for the whole 8,000?
Because none of our other documents have our, have the 35-millimeter stuff, so I think doing it all as one project and getting all the documents done at the same time, you're kind of more focused on doing that as opposed to doing this, but don't do these records, you know?
Maybe that's a phase two.
Except that there.
It's like a phase two.
This would, if you did it all at once, all of that would be handled one time.
That's true.
The original documents would be handled one time.
That's true.
I guess I would favor, just, I mean, those are, you know, protecting these documents, preserving these documents is the right thing to do.
Right, and.
But I think handling them one time would be my preference.
The other caution, and I get this when we go to.
Got stabbed by a staple, sorry.
When we go to, don't hurt yourself. When we go to conferences, there's do you, don't you?
The PDF thing.
The PDF and the 35-millimeter, because the electronic record-keeping goes out of style.
Right.
You know, we all remember floppy disks. Well, find a computer that you can put a floppy disk into now, you can't. So.
Yeah, I get that.
Yeah, so I didn't, and I didn't want to be greedy.
Would these end up in, would these end up in condition that would make it easier for them to do some type of scanning?
I'm sure.
Down the road.
I don't know for a fact, but yes, because they're treating them, they're gonna get them into some sort of productive.
Okay.
You know.
So then it's not as inbound and, you know, whatever, so. I think it's a great project.
Yeah, me too. It doesn't seem like a lot of money.
No, I don't think it's.
Sixty-seven hundred dollars.
What were the years?
It's like 1898.
Right.
This one, I just had Cataract surgery yesterday.
1893 to 1928.
Yeah, yeah.
Wow, what about our documents from before that?
From before that, those are, you don't have, like, birth records like you get now, like, from the doctor, something like that. It really was just an entry into a book. So we have a very old book that has the original entries in it that are very hard to read because a lot of it's old English.
I know, I've read it. I've looked at it.
And then there's a, someone did translate that or, you know, put it into a modern journal. So I have actually two journals with that information dating back to the 1600s.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, so people.
But there isn't backup documentation, because I've read that book, I've seen the line entries, but there's no actual.
There's nothing, there's nothing like this because I don't think, there was anything. I think you just came in and you said, hey, I had, I had a baby.
Right.
And the documents since 1928, they're just in better, they're just in better shape?
Louise and her father had done.
Had already gone back that far type thing?
Yeah, a lot of them.
Okay, I was just.
So those records are great, those are all bound, and they're in the safe, and everything's really good, and I've gotten a lot of compliments on our records.
Great. So are you looking for three individual letters or one letter from the Board of Selectmen?
Letter from the board saying, great idea.
I think this is a great idea, thank you for bringing it up.
Maybe Bob could just watch his TV.
I'd like it in writing.
We're all on board.
Yeah, watch the TV.
Okay, we'll get you, we'll get it to you in writing.
Okay, great.
Thank you for taking the lead on this.
Thank you. I'd love to see some of those. You know, if you look back at that really old book, there's some family names in there that are still here.
Oh, I bet.
Come on in anytime.
It's really, it's really great to look at. It really is, it's really nice to look at. I did it many times years ago.
Cool stuff.
It's very cool.
Go back and see everything.
There's still, there's Bardwells in those books and.
Nose dishes, though.
Nose dishes, no. That was Lydia.
Thanks, Lydia. All right, we have a package store off-premise application, needs a license.
Well, they, they have been granted this license several times.
Speaking of things that keep popping up, what do we got going on?
Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission has changed their mind again. He had received a written notification from them when she had submitted the, a previous approved license, and that had been presented to the board.
Yes.
As a result of what the Alcohol Beverage Control.
Correct.
Commission instructed the town to do.
Excuse me.
But then they had said, no, it should also be, what was it, it needs to include, what was it, a change of category or.
A new license.
Yeah, right, because the sec, the board approved it. It was by special petition, special legislation petition.
I recall.
To grant that license. ABCC had instructed the town that it needed to be treated as a new license. We did that. We submitted it.
Yep.
They came back with saying it's also a change type of category.
Well, to either new, whatever, okay.
So we keep approving everything they want us to, then we're gonna get it right eventually, right?
You already signed this.
Are they going from?
They had a wine, they had a wine and malt, and we petitioned the legislature for an all-alcoholic package store license, or on-premise.
Okay.
And, no, on-premise, off-premise, off-premise, and that was granted.
Okay.
This is our fourth try, but not anything we've done.
Yeah, it's just.
It was a town meeting, too.
The alcoholic, and we have, and this is coming from, and it's not the same.
We're gonna need another town meeting because it's gonna expire.
No, it's only for.
So why did you need legislation?
Special legislation because, well, it doesn't really add to our quota. It's by special legislation for that location only, it's non-transferable.
Okay.
All right, let's.
Okay, then let's, I'll make a motion to grant, it's an all-alcoholic beverage license.
Correct.
I'll second for the third or fourth time, I guess.
Correct.
All right, motion's been made, Ed seconded it. Is there, are there any further questions?
Hopefully they'll like it this time.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
You bet. All right, we're gonna hold off till next week on the asphalt reclaiming contract, Marlene? Is that correct?
Yes, thank you, yes, please, yes.
Our topic six was about Comcast agreement renewal. We were just, basically, we were notified that the Comcast agreement expires in 2022, and so we have, you know, we've got something in our packet just to make us aware of that, so I'm just bringing it up so folks know.
Do we still have a cable committee?
We do now.
No.
Do we have to, or can we do this?
The board can do this.
Yep.
The board can negotiate, do not have to have a committee.
Okay.
And more to follow on that as we get a little closer, but no, those are good questions. Okay, topic seven, the topic of perhaps having a subcommittee regarding future town hall maintenance and repairs.
Now, I saw the request for this topic, and the reason I had requested this topic is the project that's being done is bare bones to bring the building up to handicap accessibility, so only certain areas are being touched, where they touch the seal and they'll patch up. And the way I'd like to use, the way I'd like to explain it is, if you're a landlord and somebody moves out of your apartment before they move back in, you like to paint the walls, and a good landlord would paint the walls and fix it up, so this isn't more like renovations, this is just like building maintenance, because upstairs, the two rooms, once they moved out, there's, from the walls, there's paint peeling from the walls, there's wallpaper peeling.
Excuse me.
So it just makes more sense of trying to figure out what kind of maintenance or touch-up needs to be done before they move back in, and downstairs is the same thing. I mean, it wasn't designed to be painted or a new floor. The floor needs, I mean, talking to the building inspector, you can actually get a floor to go on top of that. But there may, may require some funding, so now's the time, I think, is to talk about it in case we need more money, we go to town meeting to protect this building. So it's not about renovating, adding rooms, it's just, you know.
Some general maintenance.
General maintenance that needs to be done, and it should be done before COA moves back. It shouldn't, I mean, it's, it needs some touch-up down there, and it probably needs a new floor. And there's, there's a lot of different types of floors on the market today that can go right on top of that. I mean, but that's still, that building inspector figures between $2,000 or $3,000 for materials, not, not thinking, you know, labor.
Whatever, yeah.
So I think it's good to identify with the architect what's not gonna be done, and we could touch up or paint. And maybe in the front office, there might be some areas that we could do some touch-up too for painting, because there's some paint peeling in some of those offices also, so that's, that's why I thought we should talk about this, because why have people move back in to.
And then move, well, either move in that way or then have to turn around and say, okay, gotta move out again.
Right, because you gotta paint it.
Yeah, no, it's a timing thing.
You know, the thing of it is, is some of, some of the big, you know, parts of this project were the result of years of deferred maintenance.
Right.
Let's not repeat that.
Right.
History, so it's completely, it's a great idea, I'm for it.
I'm for it, too. Do you think the subcommittee should be, I mean, we use the word subcommittee, made up of people in town hall that kind of work here every day?
Yeah, I think so, I mean, I think it could be a matter of just a couple people going to the rooms with the architects saying, is this gonna be fixed, or that gonna be fixed and marking it down?
Mikla, I think that's a great idea, so I'm for it.
I mean, would it be appropriate to have Marlene and Kyle and maybe one other person?
Right.
Yep, and facilities.
I'd be willing to do it because I'm the one that brought this up, so.
There you go.
Marlene and Kyle with Kevin Shay.
Do you want a motion for that, Ed?
I'll talk.
Yeah, I don't mind that.
We need to do that?
No.
No, okay.
Thank you. All right.
And then, and then we'll come up with some kind of price.
Just give you your job.
And I don't know, and then it comes down to funding, whether we have to account money, or we, I'm not sure if there's any money that can be redispositioned or not.
I think part of that, well, I think part of that's gonna be a timing issue, as far as how long this phase really takes. You know, will it, which I'm guessing it will, take us right to town meeting, by then we'll be wrapping up, so we'll have a better idea of what we, you know, so to your point, we'll have an idea of, from a funding perspective, what we may need.
Right, and then we can get it done, be, right after the end of the project, and we can go in and do these other things, so we don't interfere with it.
Or as they finish a piece of that project in a particular floor, room, whatever, however that's playing out.
Yeah, all right. But again, it's just for touch-up and maintenance, it's not, we're not talking renovation.
Nope, okay, good idea.
Excellent idea.
Thanks for taking the lead on that, Ed.
I will.
Thanks, Marlene, thanks, Kyle.
Who else, who else isn't here that we can?
Right.
All right. Marlene, under the town administrator appoint, town administrator report, please, we've got the electric power aggregation program.
Program update, and, please jump in, we, at a previous meeting, the Board of Selectmen authorized the chair to.
They did, yep.
To accept terms.
Enter, if there was a lower amount, could they go ahead and?
Correct, so Colonial Power had been watching the pricing market and contacted us, and so at a previous meeting, we were looking at the current basic service rate of 0.09851, that's between July and December, the current rate. So what they, they found was effective February 1st, 2020, and it's a three-year, 36 months, three years, a rate of 0.09948, which was very reasonable, so slightly, you know, slightly higher.
Negligible almost, but.
But it's, it's three years.
It's a three, right, we're locked in for three years.
So this is an electric power supply, it's an electric aggregation program that the town entered into a few years ago, and Colonial Power monitors the pricing and energy supply, and so this is applicable to all residents. The end of the year, Colonial Power will contact us, we're, we have an obligation to send out.
Notify, yep.
A postcard notification to all the residents.
For residents, yep.
You must opt out, and at a meeting in December, we'll have information on a, as a meeting topic and discuss that.
Yep.
Okay.
But again, that rate won't be effective until February 1st.
Right.
I think that was excellent, so Brian signed off on that, and we're, we're good.
Way we go, great, thank you, Marlene.
Thank you.
Along with the power topic, HCG, Hampshire Power Transfer.
So that's another.
Excuse me, sorry.
Program that the town of Hatfield has participated in for many, many years. Hampshire Power, through the Hampshire Council of Governments, and as we know, the Hampshire Council of Governments has become.
Dissolved.
Dissolved, just about.
Yeah, close.
I think maybe they're still working some, some contracts or services out, but the Hampshire Power has been transferred to Sunwave Gas and Power, and I went, I accepted the Sunwave Gas and Power agreement. It's within our existing contract that we have with Hampshire Power. I was also told by Hampshire Power, well, I talked with representatives who work for Hampshire Power, and those, a few employees are staying on, and they will be continuing to work right in the area. I believe they're going to open up an office, they'll close the office in North Hampton, open up an office in East Hampton. Still sad to see that happen with the cog.
Well, the process, the idea was good, you know, bulk buying for lesser rates, but.
I'd just like to also add that the procurement for services and supplies, we have some existing contracts, those have been transferred to the Franklin Regional Council of Government.
Right.
Which is a fantastic organization.
They are.
Things will be okay, more than okay with them.
Mm-hmm.
All right, thank you for that update. Do we have a town hall renovation phase two update? I know there was a meeting this week to kind of.
Yes, the contractors, subcontractors had their kickoff meeting yesterday. Next week, we expect that the temporary handicap ramp will be installed. My understanding is it will be right out here in the back. They'll be mobilizing equipment next week. DPW director, fire chief, building inspector, and I have all agreed to close off the south side entrance driveway, so they have room to work. We had talked about closing off half of that, I think it would still be a problem, just close it down and we'll use.
Play it safe.
School Street access.
Yeah.
So just people interested in coming to town hall certainly can still park out front, but there will be, DPW will be milling paving.
Excuse me, right, another project.
Right, from Maple to King Street, that's supposed to start very soon. Right, from Maple to King Street, that's supposed to start very soon. But access from School Street, and construction is expected to begin on September 5th.
Okay, thank you.
Right around the corner.
Possible COA's out of the church now.
I was just going to say that, go ahead, I'd be me too.
COA has relocated to the church, the building inspector's office is on this floor, the COA's office is relocated to this floor as well. One other thing I wanted to mention is that, well, offices that are open on Friday, as a result of the construction, will change their hours, work 10-hour days, Monday through Thursday, and close the building on Friday to allow the builders to move this stuff.
Yeah, the heavy-duty stuff that...
Right, so we're looking at either the first or second week of September, going to try to start that sooner, but COA, and I know the treasurer's office needed to make some arrangements as far as, well, it's timing, payroll and with the holiday. Make some adjustments.
Will that be noted on our website?
We will put that on our website, we'll put something in the newspaper on the cable panel as well.
Just for clarification, you guys may have just said that, I'm sorry. So the COA has relocated their programming, their activities to the basement of the church, but the director of COA is still in this building, when, not over there, her office is on this first floor now, just for clarification.
Thank you.
Yes, Lady of Grace Church, you're welcome. And the human resource policy, we're going to take that up at a future meeting, correct?
Yes.
Okay, any unanticipated new business? Ed, you got anything? Diana?
Nope.
Marlene?
Just had something here, employee form from the fire department.
Yeah, oh, we're just signing off on that to make it all...
Yes.
Okay.
I'll, I don't want to...
Yeah, we can sign off for that, so...
Tied to the chair.
If there's nothing else?
I'm, I'm good.
I'll make a motion to return.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, thank you very much, thanks, John.
Thank you, John.